Okay, I'd like to call this November 7th meeting with the planning board for order. My name is John Weiss, to my left is George Morris, Jim Robinson.
Rachel McManus.
Pete Pickos.
I'm Kayla, how are you?
Well, thank you. So we have, our agenda tonight is, and for those who are watching, you can download the agenda from the town website, but the first thing we have is our minutes that were mailed out a little bit late, but I will say let's take a look. Anybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes so we can approve them?
I get it, I have no problem.
Okay. Okay? Want to have a motion for?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
A second please, a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's both?
Both, yeah, I'm sorry, the 19th and the 3rd. So, we have candidates for, we have open planning board seats, and our two candidates, why don't you just bring up the chairs, we'll sit right around, sit right around here so we can chat. It shouldn't take long, but Larry Murphy and Kristen Grub have agreed?
Agreed?
Agreed. Agreed to put their names forward. One is a full member, Larry, and one is our new associate member, Kristen. Kristen, we know from her work, The Great Marsh Symposium, and a number of other things, and work on the Sandy Grant, and the master plan, and a number of other things, and so we're very grateful for that perspective on the board. Larry comes to us from West Newbury, and most recently, Newbury Port.
He turns about, and your work? Resident, no, Andover.
Andover.
Yeah, I retired in July, I was Andover town clerk for eight years, and worked for West Newbury before then.
And Larry will be taking my seat at the next meeting. So maybe, not to, but maybe a couple of minutes from each of you, and if any board members have any questions, we'll do that, and associates first.
Great. Yeah, thank you very much for offering me to come tonight and talk with you a little bit. I currently work as an environmental planner for Ixle River Watershed Association. I first moved to Newbury for a job at what was then called Governor Dummer Academy, so that dates me a little bit. So that was 99, I first moved to Newbury, and worked there for a few years, and then I went off to New Hampshire to graduate school in environmental studies, and lived and worked in New Hampshire, working for different land conservation organizations, and then moved back when I got married. My husband teaches at Governor's, and we've been living there since 2005, so, and previously to my work at the Watershed Association, I worked in the planning office for the town of Ixle, so I've had some experience working with town boards, sort of both sides, as a volunteer, and also municipal staff, so have had the chance to work with some of you, and some of the master planning, and climate residency planning, but I've never actually served on a planning board, so I am interested to have the opportunity to do so, and get more involved in the town from that perspective, so.
Well, it can be very exciting and sometimes redundantly boring.
Yeah. I know, you put some long hours in.
But it can be very, very rewarding, it really can. Any? Any of you guys have any questions for Kristen?
Well, I work with her on the master plan, so we're kind of already familiar with each other.
So, no, I have heard of Princeton.
Yeah.
But Antioch University of New England, that's a school I'm not familiar with. Is that related to Antioch in Ohio?
It is, there are five Antioch campuses.
Oh, I see.
Ohio is their undergraduate program, and then they have four graduate campuses.
I was so curious, I didn't know that.
Yeah, there's one in LA, one in Seattle, Yellow Springs, and then Keene, it's in Keene, Missouri.
And is the Keene one specifically environmental, or is it other things?
They have, I think they have five degree programs. They have an education certification program, they have a PhD program now in sustainability, I think, they have a large environmental studies, dance therapy, there are a few different ones.
That's great. I just didn't know that they were up there.
It's not, it sort of has quite a small classroom building, and a lot of students who drive from New England and go to classes all, in fact, I worked full-time when I was a student there, drove up Friday morning, took classes all day, and then drove back to Newbury Port, so, there are a lot of commuting students.
Not that easy.
But, it's a great school.
Well, thanks. And George, you ready?
Yeah, Kristen, Kristen and I know each other pretty well, well, pretty well, I guess.
Yeah.
And your experience, I know, will be very valuable to the board, so I look forward to having you on here.
Thank you very much.
Jim, perfect resume for what we're looking for, so, geez.
Well, thanks.
Welcome addition. Anybody else know, Martha, any further comments?
No, nothing, so I've been working with Kristen for a long time under various kinds of things, and I'm just very excited that she, she's willing to consider accepting.
I was putting my toe in as associate, which I appreciate, but I'm looking forward to being a mom.
That's fine, that's perfect. Good, you'll be fine.
Yeah, that would really be...
I know. I guess I put my toe in a little while ago, and I'll put my whole foot in.
And Larry, do you want to give us just a couple of seconds?
Sure. My wife and I, and our extended family, moved to Newbury three, six years this February. My wife and I are in an in-law apartment, our daughter and her family are in the main house, and prior to that, we were some 22, 23 years in Newbury Port, and bought our first house in Amesbury back in 1980, I think it was. And I do have, you know, a fair amount of municipal experience, I retired in July, I was town clerk in Andover for eight years, prior to that, I worked for West Newbury about 15 years, first as town council, which of course was not a full-time position, but then the last three and a half years there, I held the combined positions of town clerk and in-house town council. And I do have some planning board experience, although I have to say, it's been a few years, I was on the Newbury Port planning board for five years, starting in the late 90s. And I just retired in July, and I've been looking for a way to become more involved in the community, and this just seemed like a good fit.
One more. Craig?
Questions?
I don't have any questions. Any? Excellent background, again.
Sounds like a great fit.
Yeah? Martha, very good job of bringing these forward. So before us, we have an obligation now to put forward these names separately, or collectively, to the board of selectmen? Separately?
Well, separately, I would recommend, if the board recommend each of them for the position that we just discussed, and I've talked to Ellen about getting this on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting next Tuesday with a recommendation and request that they take action.
And so if it's at all possible, it'd be good if you guys could be there. Okay, so let's have a motion for Larry's position, taking over my position on the board as a member immediately, and then he would run for office in June, am I right?
May.
May of 2019.
So it'd be effective.
That's how it works, so he'd be an appointee for nine months or so.
I understand, and that would be a one-year term, I believe, after that, right?
No, a five-year term.
No, your term, it would be, Phil, your term.
Oh, fill out my term since 2019.
No, 2020, or 2020.
Am I 2020?
2020, George is 2019.
My God. Geez, that was true.
So one more, and then if you're, and if you're feeling good, keep on going, so that's what it is. So could I have a motion for that, for Larry's position?
I move that we accept Mr. Lawrence Murphy, candidate to fill the seat of John Weiss as a full-time member.
I'd love to recommend his appointment to the selectman, effective, John's resignation date, which will be November 19.
Yes. Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. So then we need another one for Kristen? You.
Moi? I move that this board recommend Kristen Grubbs for the associate position on this planning board, beginning when?
That would be effective immediately.
Effective immediately?
Yes.
Upon, upon, upon selection, I guess, or appointment by the planning board.
And by the final selection of the selectman?
The selectman, so that's what I meant, final.
Yeah.
Appointment by the selectman.
Right, and they do appointments on a fiscal year basis, so it'd be for the remainder of this fiscal year, is what I'm saying.
For the remainder of this fiscal year.
Till like, June?
June 30th.
June 30th to 2019. Okay? A second?
Yep.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Aye. So you guys are in.
Good.
Congratulations, and welcome to the floor. Thank you so much for doing it.
I'm sorry, we won't get to work with you, John, because I've heard very nice about you.
In spirit.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll, you'll still be connected.
He may not remember this, but he did say he would continue to help with the master plan.
Did he say that? Did he say that? You know, Martha had me down it out, you know, all right, no, I'm happy to do it, I'm happy to do it. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
So you guys are welcome to stay for the meeting if you want to, or leave if you need to, whatever.
So, is there anyone here, folks, going to get here?
No.
Do you want to go see one? Do you make a noise?
I'm not.
She a class. We will have some meetings, by the way, that are like this, not many folks, and then we'll have others that are 25, 30 people, kind of concerned about issues, you know. Martha, did you get my last-minute email?
I did, it's now a formal.
Now or?
It's based on assessment information, but it hasn't been updated.
And then, okay, thank you. But everybody else got it but me, I guess.
I guess so.
So before us is a decision we have to make on special permit findings and decisions, special permit application, dog daycare, training and play groups, 35 Downfall Road, map R41 lot 60, applicant Jennifer Ford of Seacoast Canine. So we have been over this a number of times, some of the last two minutes that we just approved had summaries of the past two meetings that we've had on this, or that these two meetings, they went the past two. And so I guess I'd like to ask the board members if they have any comments at all on the decision that was mailed out, and so, what might they be? Any?
After reading, I have none.
After reading, you have none.
I'm not really a part of it anyway.
That's right, you're not. Sorry.
I don't know.
Peter?
No, I'm fine too.
Okay, and Martha, do you have anything further to add?
Uh, no.
And the applicant, do you have anything further to add to the, you have seen the final?
We have, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything further to add.
All right, fine. Anybody here from the neighborhood? Okay. So with that, I think I'd like a motion, and we are going to vote to approve this on a voice vote. And I'm not exactly sure what the wording is of that vote. Martha, do you have anything specific in mind that you wanted to cover in the vote, or is it just a vote to approve it as I just described it?
I would say a vote to approve subject to the conditions outlined.
Okay.
Which are great.
So this would be a vote to approve the application of, let me see if I can summarize the vote, to approve the application of Jennifer Ford, Seacoast Canine, for training and play groups for 35 Downfall Road, map, as I just said, map R41 lot 60, subject to the conditions and decision that are in the document. Okay? All right, so I'll call for a voice vote, beginning with you, George. Peter?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so therefore that passes four to zero. Jim is not abstaining, he was not in enough meetings, and so therefore was unable to vote on this, on this issue. So that is put to bed, you guys are done. Congratulations, and have a good business.
Thank you very much, I wanted to thank the board as well for its careful consideration of Jennifer's application, and for taking all the comments into account, and working with us to come up with a product that seems to work for everybody, so thank you.
And I, you said you're the only one here from the neighborhood, I want to congratulate the neighborhood. The residents did a terrific job in any, I think in a very measured way, of bringing the concerns that you had forward, so that we could understand them in a meaningful way, and had a decent dialogue with the applicant, who was willing to make some concessions based on your concerns, so I think in this situation, I'm hopeful that everybody believes that this is a good situation for the, for the neighborhood and for the business, so thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Just procedurally, I'll get this filed, I may not be able to do it tomorrow, but I'll get it filed with the clerk on Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday, and then there's a 20-day appeal period. At the end of that, then she will provide you with a certificate of clerk. We also need to send notification out to the abudders that the special permit has been granted, that action's been taken, so that will be going out as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have an appearance from Jeffrey Hoffman of Millennium for submission of an A and R for 277 High Road, and the applicant being Parker River Realty Trust.
Yes, thank you.
Come on up and say hello.
Hello, my name's Jeffrey Hoffman from Millennium Management, I was expecting...
Your attorney?
Susan to be here, who is the attorney for the trust.
Yeah, we've been told that she was going to be here, but she's not.
I think maybe she got a little, because she thought she was coming later or something.
Yeah, yeah, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Oh, I see.
No, I did tell her maybe September 18th.
I don't know what time, what time did it have, 20th?
Um, I've got 20th.
Or so, I think she was, she was planning on being at court fast, but I have the package all together for the submission.
Do you want to just give us a quick summary of what this is all about? We really are just going to take it and set a public hearing date, and it's purely...
This is the A and R.
This is the A and R.
Oh, it's got to be approved tonight?
Yeah, endorsed tonight. No, no here.
Thank you.
I haven't been to one yet since the old town hall, so I don't know how you go through procedures, but it was...
Susan?
Yes, hi.
Hi, Susan Murphy.
Hi, Susan. Sorry, we are running fast.
No, that's okay, that's always nice for a board.
Yeah? Well, okay, so let us know what you're up to then, and then we can accept it and approve it, because it is an A and R.
Sure, pass up.
Oh, sure.
Everybody know where this property is?
277 High Road.
It's across from the Lower Green, it was a property, do you remember the, about four months ago in the summer, there was an auction at this house? It's a house that's on the corner, which remains as Parker, and then they own all this land, it's been in the family as far as I can tell, it's part of the family, and then all of these lots get A and R because they all have frontage, so there's no separate But I do understand from the attorneys that, because once this is done, the pre-existing conditions are no longer applicable, is that right, attorney? I mean, that...
No, we're not in agreement with the town.
You're not?
Well, I've spoken to at least some major town council about that, but we have a difference of legal opinion regarding that.
We usually go with our town council.
Yeah, I understand that. I don't go in need for that.
Okay, so, but also, you know that, and have heard, I'm sure, that the town will support whatever is necessary to put it in performance, and that's, I mean, for what? You mean, no one's going to fight you from the town to do what you have to do to put it into performance, if the town determines exactly what has to be done?
No, I appreciate that, yeah, I'll look at trustees, know that, I do.
The other consideration on that is the property is in 61A, and so at some point, before any lots can be conveyed, we will proceed to notice the intent to sell.
Oh, you do, okay. And so they'll wind up being six lots, roughly an acre and change each, oh, except for this, the initiative, the star block, which is...
Which is larger.
An acre and a half. What remains on that is the mains, main house?
All the existing structures.
And all these back structures, a garage, and then bar.
That's a two-story block.
And that's the bar, yeah. Okay. And is that property going to be rehabbed, or is it...
At this point, there's, there's no, no plans, the trustees, because they're trustees...
They're going to sell it off.
Have to sell, sell off the property.
They're going to sell it off.
So, you know, what happens when they're going forward, they don't know yet.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is it'll probably be eventually rehabbed, and because they're going to put it in performance with the rest of the new structures that are going in.
Well, if they sell them, they won't, that would be their decision, I think, maybe.
Okay. Peter?
Would somebody like to explain in a little more detail about what one is happening in terms of all the structures, well, in terms of, we have 67,000 square feet, and we have all these structures.
Right, the issue is that they don't make the front yard setback, none of these structures.
Right, I understand, right.
Well, 200 acres.
Right, right, of course. Right. So, according to our town council, once this lot is divided, right now it's six-plus acres, once the lot is divided, the law plans are changed, they essentially lose their grand housing status.
Okay, so then, so then you're going to have to deal about with that?
Right, right.
Right, so, they'll, they will deal with it, right, so council's recommendation has been that they would go to the ZVA to get relief on that, and Tracy and she and I met and we've been, you know, we're all in agreement that, that the town would support that request.
Did that happen for us?
Lisa said no, and since it's an A and R plan, they have their required frontage on a public lay, it can be submitted to the board, and since it has the frontage, the board actually has to endorse it. I have gone through the plan, a couple of different iterations, just to make sure that it's complete and meets our submission requirements, so there are no concerns about that tonight.
So if it's endorsed tonight, that it's not subject to anything other than just endorse it, period?
Right.
That, I think that's all, that's the only action we're taking?
Right, because the board can't, board can't condition an A and R plan.
Okay.
Again, it's got the required frontage, and it meets our submission requirements, and there was a note on here, it's a little, we usually have a note up on the plans about endorsement, not, not giving it any status on reselling or certifying it's in performance or title five, this note is a little bit differently worded, this was reviewed with town council, so.
And they're okay. Okay. And this is the term, the cemetery is here, am I right?
Correct, that's correct.
And these properties, I'm just curious, I drove down here and took a look at them, and I know, for a while, you look back, and you, we try to get as many OS, you know, OSRDs as we possibly can, but I think that this makes sense as a traditional, you know, put a house here, put a house there, and I think that makes fits, it's what exists in the neighborhood, you know, in a way.
Yeah, it's called frontage, we actually did have discussion about the requirements in our OSRD, but it's been determined that this is...
Yeah, no, I think it works, I think it works. Okay, so can I have a, any discussions about this, George or Jim, or any further comments? So let's have a motion to endorse, accept?
Endorse.
George?
I make a motion to authorize the chairman to endorse the plan entitled Plan of Land in Newbury, Massachusetts, showing proposed subdivision prepared for Parker River Realty Trust, and let's see, located at 170, 277 High Road in Newbury.
Another second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this issue? All those in favor? Aye. You want these signed now?
If you could do the mylar now, and the form, and then I'll sign this later.
Thank you.
And then I can delete this, the Form A, if that's, just hold everybody up. Okay, thank you. I want to try and write to you. I'm just, I think so.
We have all these. No, I got a couple of things here, I don't care.
There you go. Sure, that'd be great, yeah. I think we'll sell it, yeah, okay, no, you're welcome. Yeah, so, and I will email you a copy of the Form A, after this, if that's okay, would you like one as well?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks, thank you.
Maybe you want this?
Yep. A lot of houses in Newbury, Adam True, Adam True, that one that's being built on the Hilton property? Anyway, I'll tell you about it, but it's, it's huge. You know what it, no, you know what it is? Remember we had that discussion with W. York to do a, like you went on the board? Yes, you did, you picked me up to take the walk. Remember? Remember that property? Keep on going down the driveway, and that's what it's, that's what it is. Okay. Do you want all of these signed then, too? The plans?
Yeah, four of them, please.
This is an extra here, do you want me to sign it too, just for the heck of a show?
Yeah.
Hello.
Are you Vern?
I am not Vern, we're with Vern, I don't know if you can hear.
Well, we're a little running ahead of schedule.
A bit early, I'll text him and see if we can get together.
Well, we can hold on, we have, we have other things to discuss. Well, we can hold on, we have, we have other things to discuss. The, a couple of issues like special permits to financial. It's right in front of me. How come I'm signing this this way? Because it was written.
Yeah.
I'm usually getting thirty dollars.
Don't make sense.
I could show the whole thousand.
Very good. Very, very good.
That's it, right? Nothing else on this? Copies, right? Okay. Nope. Probably extend you with your signature. All right, so the financial report for October for the planning department is payroll warrants for the town planner and planning administrator assistant were paid, were signed, payroll nineteen oh eight, pay period ten thirteen twenty eighteen, and PR nineteen oh nine for pay period ending ten twenty seven twenty eighteen. Expect invoices for Walters Clure Regulatory U.S., oh, Mark Bobrovsky, Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law Edition, for Planning Office Library on October the fourth twenty eighteen. Just out of curiosity, how much was that?
It's four hundred ninety-six dollars.
Yeah, those are, those can get very expensive, because they don't sell too many of them.
And we split it with Sam, actually.
You did?
Well, he, he got one and I got one.
Yeah, no, that happens, I know. Verizon Wireless Planning iPad, monthly charge ten thirty-one twenty eighteen, and Martha Taylor Employee Expense Reimbursement, ten thirty-one twenty eighteen. So on old business, let me know when Vern gets here with you.
He's at half a mile away.
Half, oh, good.
Quite a quarter mile.
Keep on moving. Potential zoning and general bylaw amendments for April, that means the spring town meeting reports on solar, OSRD, wireless, and noise. And so I know that Martha, you've had some discussions with the town planner from West Newbury, you've got some issues.
Um, I did. Well, I had a discussion, first of all, with Lisa Mead about solar and wireless communications, and I've sent both of our existing bylaws to her for review. I think I said, sent an earlier email that she recommended three communities for us to look at. One of the things that she and I discussed was the merits or not merits of creating an overlay district for solar. And related to that, I had an interesting conversation with Leah Zambrinardi, who's the planner for West Newbury, not a week and a half ago, actually, two weeks ago now. There's a parcel in West Newbury which abuts our parcel off of Scotland Road that has the, the state police barracks. And that, their parcel is zoned industrial, ours is in the commercial highway district, and the conversation was whether they, they have green communities designation, we do not at the moment, I'll get into that in a bit. And they've been having some, some issues with getting some solar things passed in West Newbury. So the conversation was whether we could actually somehow jointly set that area up as potentially an overlay district for solar. There, there are permanent wetlands on the property.
Does that, is it common pasture? Or is it?
It might kind of through the back, I haven't looked at it that closely. But there are a lot of wetlands on the property as well, so it would need to be flagged, but it's, it's state-owned, so we have a lot of players that might have to get involved, so the two municipalities, the state.
Who, do they wanna drive this? I mean, do they wanna be the major player on it, are they willing to?
No, I think they really wanna do it kind of jointly, and she and I talked about how we might be able to kind of get the pieces to fall together. We talked about talking with Neil Duffy, who's heading up the green communities thing, talking with Karen and maybe Jill at NVPC, to get their help on it, as well as bringing the two communities together, whether it would be Tracy and Angus.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
So, I know that, you know, when JR was here a couple of weeks ago, he expressed interest in trying to develop an overlay district, and when I talked to Leah, it seems like this really might be an area where we could.
How large would it be, do you have a sense?
Um, I can't remember, I think our parcel's like thirty-one acres.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty impressive, because the, the two that we've just done are only twelve acres each.
Right, right.
So, I mean, there's just so much capacity, right?
And their, their parcel has no, no frontage, no access, so it'd have to be through, through us, because it abuts ninety-five, and it's landlocked.
Ah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, you might have told me that, but I guess I didn't, didn't register. Well, I think that's a great idea, so what do you think of the next steps?
So I think the next steps would probably be to talk with her again, I did mention it to Tracy, and maybe to have a conversation with Karen, and if I can do it offline after the next commissioners' meeting, and see what she thinks, how she might.
Who's the West Newbury rep?
Uh, I.
I don't, I don't think they show up a lot.
I don't know who it is.
I've got a sheet though that might tell me, or you can, no, go online.
Or you can go online.
And, and figure that out, because you might wanna have a discussion with him or her, I think it's. But I don't think they attend that many meetings. This is the Nurmagh Valley Planning Commission, of which Martha is our representative from the town, we meet once every, once a month, and it's got fourteen towns represented, and they might do some terrific work, and so Karen Cannard is the executive director, and we're talking about whether we can use her to help fuse together the two towns, that's an exactly great purpose of what she's there for, so. Well, I think that sounds interesting, so I think good luck with that. Anything else?
Yeah, I was pretty excited about that, actually.
I have a question. National Grid, will they be contacted early on about capacity for taking into that part of the grid?
Um, well, that was one of the things that I mentioned to Leah, that I needed to look at, because we, you know, we don't, it's not a location where the, the high tension wires are going through.
Right.
So, that's one of the considerations to figure out.
It's the latest, it's the latest thing politically, that National Grid has not been taken, I know they went through a number of issues recently, about, about a year ago, where they weren't accepting the new solar things because of pushback coming from their, their customers, am I right?
I don't know.
Yeah. Who were being assessed.
Excess, yeah, that's been going on.
Right. Well, yeah, but anyway, it should be interesting to see. Well, let's just move forward and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, a lot to sort out, but I think it's a very interesting possibility.
Would this change also do anything to the current special permit process?
Um, well, I think that would be the question, and that's one of the things that we need to sort out when we look at the solar. I did describe to Lisa on Monday how, you know, how we break it down, the special permit for two acres and over, and site plan review for a quarter acre up to two, and she seemed to feel that that was reasonable. But if we want to go for green communities designation, we would need to allow it by right.
Allowed by right.
In, in some areas, so that's what, where the overlay district could come in, could be allowed by right with site plan review, so there would still be some oversight.
Well, I could see allowing it by right in the BLI with, with site plan review. But anyway, but I mean, the major, I mean, we have been able to do it in these very difficult areas, one of the, both Borrego projects, you know, were in sensitive areas, and the special permit was appropriate.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold on our further reports, and we'll get to the issue of the Upper Green. And are you Vern?
Yes, hi.
Kai, come on up if you would. Visionary Landscape Submission of Site Plan Review Application for the Newbury Upper Green, applicant is Jean Green, excuse me, ER, Karen Keith Abloh. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm not sure exactly what I'm supposed to hear, I guess it's.
I think you're supposed to just be submitting this thing, maybe giving us an overview, it's my sense that we can't really comment on it until we set the public hearing, and so, but if you could maybe explain it to the board, and board members get a sense of what it's all about, you submit it, we accept it, and then we set the meeting as probably December. Well, this has gotta be with the board's request.
Right, and I have a meeting date, and that's, we're gonna have to request an extension in terms of when we open up here, so I'll get into that in a bit.
Okay.
Okay, um, quick overview, this is Dr. Keith Dablo and his son Cole, and they started Greener with a group of other young men and fathers that are overseeing it, and the idea is to start renovating historic greens around the Commonwealth. And the very first project that they chose was the Newbury Upper Green, and what they would like to do is bring attention to the history of the Upper Green, and to be able to bring it back to its glory with the original plantings around the periphery, which once were elms, but because, you know, Dutch elm disease and so forth. So we wanna replant with the cherry trees, and we've chosen zelkova, but with approval and so forth. The idea is to bring it back to its, and to get the grading proper, so they don't have puddles all over in the spring and so forth, and to relocate, working with the Little League Commission, the ball field, which is on the plans, because for years, certain towns won't play Little League here in Newbury, because of the sun angle, so they think it's dangerous, so we're moving it to another position off of Green Street, where in front of the old historic home, so it doesn't disrupt any of the abutters view, but also it's aimed towards the pond, so that the sun angle, even though you have a slight sun angle, it can't avoid it completely, it'll now be safe for the kids to play.
So where's the backstop gonna be? That's the whole issue.
Yeah, if you.
Do you wanna roll that? There, I've got the smaller one here.
It's the big one.
Is it, is it that the sun is in the batter's eyes?
You guys, we, we've explained this, but.
Is it that the sun is in the batter's eyes?
Yes, I guess for years, what the problem is, is you come down Ralph's Lane right here, it was here, as you know, it still is, but the sun angle, I guess, is very dangerous, which I didn't know, and I've been here twenty-seven, eight, twenty-eight years now, but, so, and also on High Street, so if we position it this way, it's not really disrupting any of the views, and we've spoken with all the abutters, this is that historic house, which is pretty much wooded, so it keeps it open, and then we talked with the gentleman with the fire department for the muster, so that that won't interfere, we got their approval, but the whole reposition was for the sun angle.
And this was put forward by the Little League?
Yes. We've gone through the whole thing, and then if they had really requested it, and Martha's been to different meetings and so forth, so working with them, and with Camden Engineering, we repositioned it, so that we could work with the abutters, but also make it safe for the Little League.
My comment is that when you've got it here, you've got the, the catcher and the hitter with a sun problem. When you've got it here, you've got the first baseman, second baseman, center fielder, and right fielder with a sun problem, so I'm not sure if it solves the sun problem.
Well, it's not a hundred percent, but it's better than it was, and so they approved it. It's, there is no way around getting it perfect, I mean, just because of the location and the way that it's positioned.
If the Little League wants it, I'm sure that, you know, and if the selectmen wanted to do it that time.
It's really on their request, so that was the last minute thing, but then working with them and trying to accommodate, so that other towns will actually play.
No, that, yeah, because I have noticed lately that there haven't been a lot of teams playing in the spring and in the summer.
That's the main reason.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, I didn't know it either until we started, that's, that's the question, and the idea also is, if you look here, this is a walkway.
Too far. Yeah, it's too far, I think it's, I'm looking, it, it scale is forty, that's a hundred and twenty feet, so, two forty, two, eh, you could probably do it, so a real good hitter could probably get it to the pond, maybe it's two seventy or something, that's a lot for the Little League.
That question had come up, so it's a really good question, but honestly, if you take this to here, it's not that much different.
Yeah, it's, it's here anyway.
Yeah.
You know, so, I don't think it's much difference. That's a nice, well, and so what else are you proposing?
This is a stone walkway around the pond.
Large, just to explain it, because the historical commission, they didn't wanna put brick, like, all over Newbury Port and so forth, so we thought, how could we make it accessible for handicapped, and for the elderly, even just people that, you know, have a hard time walking when it's really wet and so forth, so we came with the idea of large natural flat ocean stone, very closely tightened it together, so that you can easily go over it, but the natural stone has its own look, and it will blend in more to the landscape, more red pops.
And.
Yeah, it would.
We have various plantings and sort of restoration of the area here that used to be a sitting area, and the walkway extends to show the historic military monument, and so we get monuments being showcased instead of lost to a follow-up.
The idea is, this is the promenade, and living here for years, I always noticed it, but I know people who've lived there their whole lives and never even knew there was a flagpole, we're trying to bring attention to the memorial rock that people give their lives, the veterans and so forth, throughout time, here in Newbury, which people don't even know about, by bringing the promenade with the stone around it, just planking around the flagpole at the base and around here, allows people, the Boy Scouts and veterans stay, and also to bring the eye, you know, so people can gather and have celebration for veterans' memorials, and, and bring a really attention to it, to draw people in, where now they just don't really notice, I don't know why, they just don't, so it's to bring attention. And then by bringing this across to the old memorial rock, again, they bring this attention. One other thing is that we're gonna, there's benches now, but we wanna put benches, a few extras around the edge, so that people can come and sit and so forth. Outside of planting around the periphery, to bring back the original look with new trees, but they'd be five to six inch, so they're gonna be large right away, like thirty-foot, twenty, thirty-foot trees.
So what, 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 what variety on it?
What variety on it?
Katsura, zelkova.
K, what is that?
Do you know the, the pond over, it was the federal courthouse in Newbury Port?
Sure.
Where they redid the walkway with all the stones?
The mall?
Yeah, and now you see them, they're all yellow, those are katsures. Because they don't have disease and they have no.
How tall will they get, how tall will they?
About fifty feet.
Really?
Yeah.
And they'll all be consistent, so it'll be, it will be very beautiful once they're, you know, in place.
Right, and we wanna go large right away, so that you get the effect right away, you know, waiting for years.
Well, let me ask you, since you're saying going large right away, who's paying for it?
So, no, you, the town is paying nothing for it, it's all gonna be private donations, which it has been today, we spent about, what, we spent fifty, fifty grand getting permitting so far, all donated privately.
Meaning just to, to, to Green ER, is that what it's called?
Uh, yes, the donations have been to Green ER and out of Green ER, to, to the various individuals, agencies, planning people, fees, et cetera, to get through this process.
And the bank has offered money just to show, but this is a permitting process, and then they will forward it, but not until we have a permit placed.
What's the budget on this?
But the Newbury Port Five Cent Savings Bank is gonna help us, and it's not gonna be cheap, but we already have people that are willing to put money forth, but we need to get through the process to final, before they're gonna put money actually on the table.
So what was the final budget?
It's gonna be like.
About four hundred thousand.
Yeah, which will raise, once we know that it's permitted, we have had very little resistance to asking for significant contributions from businesses and banks and so forth, but they all want to know that we're actually gonna do it, so we've had to scrape together about, you know, fifty, we're kind of running out, we need to get through the permitting process, we'll probably be at fifty-five thousand or something when we're done permitting it, kind of a waste, but it is what it is.
Needs to be done in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yeah, we do when people are bored, so the whole idea is to put it forth to build it, and it's not gonna cost taxpayers anything, keep it within the historic context of the Upper Green, and the other thing that I find very important as the designer, is we wanted to bring attention to the fact that Newbury is an agricultural town, it was started as an agricultural town, as a land grant from England, and a company which was given the money and the land that had. And a company which was given the money and the land that happened, was a cattle company, I believe out of Yorkshire. They were sent with the ships that settled actually Newbury as we know it today. And it's still an agricultural town. They split over taxes, you have the port, and then you have the agriculture of Newbury. We want to bring that attention to it. And part of it was to propose to bring in bronze cattle at life size and put them where one's offset, one's actually feeding, the other one's going towards the water. Because this is the original watering hole, this was the gathering place. Underneath each one of these bronze cattle will be a sign that explains the history of Newbury and the point of the upper green. There'll be one strategically placed just off this other memorial rock to bring people over again, to bring attention to the history and with the signs. Also, kind of like the ducks on, on the pond, the common in Boston, I believe that people go by and say, for years and years to come, and they'll have the kids next to it, and it's gonna bring attention to the upper green as a training ground, which they'll read when they read the rocks, through the revolution, and also as the historical agricultural center and gathering place for the town of Newbury. And I think it'll last for generations and generations. And that's what we're trying to do, and to fix the grading, which we'll have Camden set it, so that everything, all of water goes appropriately. Right now it's a big bowl. If you look at it, where the streets are, it's a big bowl, so we're gonna fix all of that. That's a big nutshell.
Okay.
The fun.
All right.
And you're also, you're also putting an aerating fountain in that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
An aerating fountain?
Yeah.
The low-profile aerating fountain.
And it's not gonna be a fountain fountain, which some people have concerns. What it is, is it's gonna be underneath, just like at a golf course, so it aerates it, then you take it out in the winter so you can ice skate. But it's to keep it clean. And hopefully, I'm not saying it's gonna scare the geese away, you know, maybe, but, but maybe it will.
No, the fact is, the thing, the, the fellow who did the, whatever project he did, July or August, that scared, that scared the geese away.
Yeah, they didn't like it.
They didn't like it.
You're right.
Right.
Well, anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
We set, do we have to set it down?
Um, yes, so the board needs to accept your application. And then set the public hearing date, and I have some information on the public hearing date.
Okay, so let's have a motion to accept. First, let's do, accept the application, and then we have to set the hearing date.
Okay, I move to accept the application for Newbury Upper Green. Applicant Green ER, care of Dr. Keith Abloh. Visionary landscapes, I'll see.
Okay, a second, second, a second, any comments? Oh, Pete did it. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now let's set the date, which would look like it's gonna be.
Um, so the date, we've talked with town council about three potential dates. One was December fifth, which wasn't great because we already have a public hearing that night. December eleventh, which was a selectman's meeting. Or December nineteenth, which is the second planning board meeting in a month. Town council can join us only on December nineteenth, so that looks like the date. Problem is that under our submission, under the planning board site liner view, rules and regs, it has to be open within thirty-five days. So I have here, if you, if you all would be willing to grant the board an extension to December twentieth to open the public hearing, so that we can have council there. And we're holding it jointly with the border selectman for water protection overlay district special permit. This will also be going before the conservation commission because the pond is a resource area.
So the meeting itself would be, the hearing itself, the public hearing would be the twentieth?
No, actually, I just did the twentieth for an extra day, it would be the nineteenth, I just created us an extra day.
Sure.
Yeah, of course, we'll set it for the nineteenth at seven fifteen P M.
Okay, excellent.
So if you.
Seven fifteen P M.
So if you could sign that, I would agree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So then the board needs to actually set that as the public hearing date.
You wanna do that?
I move that we set a date, is this a public meeting date?
Public hearing date.
Public hearing. Public hearing date for a Newbury Upper Green project by Green R for Dr. Keith Abloh to December nineteenth at.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any comment?
George or Jim?
George.
George, Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all set?
See you then. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One thing, I feel, there was a check for Camden and I don't know.
A check for Camden, yeah?
Yeah, the one for Oscar.
So do you want to take that one?
Sure.
Oh, great, yeah, I'll wrap it up. Brilliant, thank you very much.
All right, thanks again.
That's what I get for not opening.
I'll see you on the nineteenth.
Thanks again.
So I will provide a butter notification, and I will add to you guys, because you need to trace it in a newspaper and send a butter notification, so shall I coordinate?
Thank you again, guys, thanks. Excellent.
We can ask. Okay.
I never opened, I guess.
I finished with the sober discussion, did you want to add anything else to that? And then O S R D?
Uh, we talked about that last time, it's just a tweak in the language based on communication from town council. Marla's communication, as I said, I told her that our existing Marla's communications to her and asked her to give us, you know, either her input or whether it be Kate, I'm not sure who would be looking at it, templates from other towns that she thinks are reasonable, recent.
We certainly have a problem in town, because most of Plum Island, or a good deal of Plum Island, a good deal of where I live on one A, has terrible phone, cell phone service. And, and most times get one bar, and a lot of times will always drop calls and have a difficult time with even internet connections, so. I mean, if we want to encourage people to have home businesses so they don't have to commute to Boston, we need to improve that, so. And there was an article in the Globe the other day, did you see about five G?
Well, I've read a bit about five G now, probably more than I wanted to know.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, you know.
But it's gonna be a while, but it also sounds like they're talking about, it's, it's like many smaller, if you want to call them antenna or.
Yeah.
Equipment spread out over.
Instead of having one big tower.
Instead of having towers that go from one to another.
Well, it's a response to a lot of complaints, and that people have had, you know.
So I, yeah, they've ruled it out in some pretty big cities, so it'll be.
Oh, really?
Science experiment.
Where are you doing it?
In Texas somewhere, I can't remember, it was Houston or Austin, they're playing around with it.
Okay, noise, I'm not sure we're gonna get, this is, this is a SAM issue. And so, so the board is gonna have to.
I actually looked into it.
You did?
I did.
Good for you.
Yes, and I started by looking at our neighbors. It was quite interesting, puddling through other towns' documents. So I couldn't really find anything in Georgetown about noise, and I couldn't find too much, anything in Raleigh about noise, but West Newbury had stuff about noise, as did Newbury Port. And so Newbury Port is pretty, pretty general, it's under their section eight noise ordinance. And basically, from ten, ten P to seven A, it's by a time limit. So, you know, that, that affects everything, construction, businesses.
So no construction can start before seven?
Right, right. Now, I'm looking in my high-tech phone here as to where I put the other note, because about West Newbury. West Newbury actually was very interesting, because they had it broken down into the decibel gradients of what was allowable and what wasn't allowable. But it was also, it was an hourly time, but when I find it, I'll just tell Mark. But those are the two that I could find.
Okay.
So, I mean, West, I don't know if we want to dovetail West Newbury, because it's more about our city.
It is, I mean, it's, it's very much our, Newbury Port is not, but I think that West Newbury would be, be interesting. When, when our new member comes on the board, he can give you all the West Newbury information that you need. So that's great. Well, thank you, thanks a lot, Pete. Uh, signs?
Signs, I've carried that one on and off, just our, our bylaw has never been reviewed in terms of the Supreme Court decision agreed several years ago. So I mentioned that to Lisa the other day, and she kind of said, well, nobody wants to review some bylaws, but I'm gonna send it to her and ask her to look at it. The other one we talked about last time was a special permit granting authority in presidential agricultural that we need to update. And then the other item on here is really zoning that is related to potential green communities designation. Joe Cosgrove has been sort of encouraging us to apply for green communities, and I know that James is actually quite interested. And that's our D P W director, is very interested in potential green communities because he might be looking at some grants for work that he needs to do. And in order to do that, we need to do some as-of-right citing for renewable or alternative energy generating facilities or within it R and D facilities or manufacturing facilities. So that comes back to the discussion we were having earlier about it, overlay district, where we might do that as-of-right. And again, you know, probably want to get J R involved in that conversation. And the selectmen, we really need to kind of support our going ahead with this.
And I got the sense that they were interested in it, no?
Uh, Damon is very interested in it. When I first brought it up with the selectman last year, I think J R was concerned about potential for as-of-right citing of solar.
Well, as long as it's not in the A R district.
Right, right. And then it also requires expedited permitting for facilities to be located in designated renewable zone and adoption of a stretch energy code. Back in two thousand and nine, when we first started talking about this, Sam was not in favor of adopting the stretch energy code, but it's, it's, he now feels that it probably would be a good thing to go for green communities.
Do you know what changed this on?
Um, I think at the time, it was kind of the beginning of the recession, it was a burden for.
Thought it'd cost a lot.
For homeowners. But the stretch energy code apparently is not that different now from the regular code. And so he feels it would be worth going for that. One thing I was not able to do is put together the schedule for, if we're gonna try and get any of this stuff on the warrant for town meeting in the spring, so I will aim to do that for next time.
Okay. Do you have anything additional to all these other items? The town planners report?
I have town planners report. First of all, there's gonna be an open space conference on Saturday, December first, and I received a bunch of postcards from Essex County Greenbelt regarding this, so I'm gonna pass that around.
You have it?
I have some.
You have a, a bunch.
And actually, as an aside, I had a very interesting conversation today with a young woman named Max Gallon, who is the one who's farming Joe Story's property.
Oh, across from Adam and Drew.
She came into my office because she's very interested, and I guess she's had some discussions with Vanessa at Essex County Greenbelt about trying to, you know, mechanisms for preserving open space and agricultural land. And she, she's very much committed to wanting to continue farming in Newbury. And we had a long, long discussion, the upshot of which is she said she would be willing to serve on our open space committee, which is great, because there are only two of us right now, so we're not an official committee. But, you know, I think it goes into some considerations of the master plan about preservation of agricultural space and how we can make that happen. Let's see. Also, I received a phone call today from the person who was appointed at the same time you were, Mr. Costas.
Having to sell some market for mega bucks.
And he wants to come in to meet with me next week about some ideas he has on how he might develop the property or subdivide it in some way.
We've been down this road.
Been down this road before, so we'll see what he has to say.
It, yeah.
We are probably, relatively shortly, be, going to be receiving a very odd little subdivision application for a property that's at the very end of Shandell Drive, which is in Newbury Port. And it's owned, it's owned by probably a stopkinjer, here's Shandell Drive, which comes off Water Street. Here's the parcel. And his, he, the municipal boundary is right through here. So what he needs to do is somehow create some frontage for him, so it's a billable parcel. There's a pond here, so most of it's actually within the hundred-foot buffer. He's had discussions with the fire chief and the police chief about this, as well as, I guess, the counterparts in Newbury Port, but it's another situation where there's gonna have to be some coordination between the two municipalities. I spoke with town council about it on Monday, and she feels, apparently Andy Ford, the planning director, said that she doesn't think it needs to go through process, but she thinks it does in Newbury Port.
It's just one lot.
It's one lot, and there're gonna be a ton of labors, I mean, this is, this is it. And then there's gonna be drive the house, we, we're not done.
And these all exist?
These all exist, he actually owns this parcel here right now.
Has this been built on?
Yeah, yeah, so he wants to build on this and have a nice, architecturally interesting house, and get the pond. The address is off Ralph's Lane, but obviously there's no access to it from Ralph's Lane, so we're having discussions on what we do for many more purposes, what to call this. At least, I both thought, sort of Shandell Drive extension might be appropriate. But I have to communicate with Michelle as well.
So would it be responsible for that? Would that be town?
For this a little bit, it would be private, I think, yeah, we'd have to make it private. I don't think our backs are gonna get down through Newbury Port.
So basically, he wants to make this a billable lot?
That's correct. Yeah.
And his frontage is gonna be there?
Yeah.
And it's just one building?
One building, one house lot, yeah.
But it's within one hundred feet of the buffer?
Yeah, yeah, it would be between the fifty and hundred, probably. Doug encouraged him to stay out of the fifty. And the other thing that he has to be done is he's going to acquire a little bit of land from this parcel here to give him the required area. So there would be a separate A and R plan that goes along with this. Lisa and I talked about having the A and R plan, you know, just on a separate sheet, it could be submitted at the same time. But it's kind of a complicated little thing for.
Have fun, George. No, it's easy.
I guess so. So, anyway, just wanted to give you all a heads up for this was coming. The other thing that I wanted to pull up on, James, I don't know if you recall, a while back, a developer in Georgetown, Amy Ford of all the selectmen, they're doing a, an O S R D off of Larkin Road and Newbury and Parrish Road in Georgetown. And they sent a letter to James requesting permission to do a curb cut in Newbury off of Larkin Road. The access to the subdivision, even though it's in Georgetown, is gonna be off of Larkin Road. I talked with town council about that as well. Just got an opinion from Brian Winner today on this, which I will share with all of you. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. But it's gonna have to go through some process with the board.
There, that's not a small subdivision, is it? Or it's, what is it, like, seven or eight?
Yeah, I think maybe, yeah, something like that.
Something, I mean, I guess that is small, but I mean, just seven or eight?
You know, a lot of weapons on the parcel.
It's a tough road, Larkin Road.
So as part, part of this whole deal, there, they said, the developer said that they would rebuild the culvert, which is collapsed, so Larkin Road is dead end right now, if we would pave it. Lisa said, well, why aren't they repaving it, you know, why should, why should it?
I thought that Columbia was repaired. No?
Not yet.
But they said that they would do it.
They said they would do it.
Maybe that's, that's like two years ago, isn't it? Quite some time ago.
Yeah, it's been quite some time.
Well, on this same issue, when, when will Mike Bogeros's property come back in?
Uh, they're, they're doing on the fifth.
On the fifth?
Right, okay, so get that advertised. It's at seven fifteen, okay. The other thing that I, I talked, if any of you were interested, I talked with Leah, the West Newbury planner, about. They had a study done by Herriman investigating packaged treatment plants for potential downtown expansion, commercial expansion. So I actually have copies of that, if anybody's interested, kind of ties in with Congress. It kind of ties in with conversations we had with Marshall Jesserson during the master plan process. It's available also on the West Newbury's website.
I've read it, it's, it's a pretty good report. Who paid for that?
It was paid for by grant, I think it was a grant from the...
Like, the state?
It was the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative of DHCD.
Yeah, that's right. Good for them. But it does have application some potentially for us, even though it's not the same situation.
Right, right, but same like, you know, like we were looking at anyways.
Okay.
So I think that's all I got.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Thank you, very good. Liaison reports, do you want to talk about the vote?
Not really.
No. No. Did everybody see the vote? Did they see what it was?
Almost two to one against. So I don't know...
Lesson to be learned there.
Yeah, probably many. So I honestly don't know what's gonna happen. I'm expecting that this will be a big topic of discussion at the selectmen's meeting next Tuesday to figure out what dirt should go in.
Right.
So there'll need to be some, some regrouping, and it'll be up to them, really, to see what happens.
That was a whoopin'.
It was a whoopin'.
Self-inflicted whoopin'. Anyway. Concon? What's going on?
Haven't met since...
Oh, yeah.
Actually, there's a bit of an issue, I'll call it erosion, at the Newbury Golf Center, but I think Marv knows more about it than I do.
There's a lot more than erosion at the Newbury Golf Center.
Well, I can give the report. Doug and I went out last week, he had gotten a, a phone call from Barbara Rogers, expressing concern that there was a lot of, seemed to be a lot of sediment in Card Creek coming down. And Doug went out and looked at it, by the time he got there, it was running fairly clear. He and I went to the site last Thursday, looked around, grasses, there's some little areas that look like Chia Pet, and most areas that are much less green than that. I've got a bunch of photos if anybody's interested. But we did look at that specifically, didn't see anything at the time that was contributing. There are areas where clearly runoff is, is channelizing, and Doug suggested putting in a number of check dams to just slow things down, and that detention basin that was really deep is holding water, and the other one seems like it may start holding water just because there's, there's so much still in it. But apparently, what was happening, something that he and I couldn't see at the time, where the weapons are, and all that rock that there, it was channeling down and getting in through that rock and then running down into the base of the creek near the road. So that has, Eric was out there with Bernie from our DPW, and that apparently has been addressed, so we'll see what happens.
So was that environmental guy going out there every 20 seconds?
He's supposed to be, we got three more swift reports. But Doug was gonna put together a report, go back out, and there are things that have not been addressed. His feeling now is if they're not causing problems, probably not necessarily things that, that have to be addressed at the moment, but if they do cause problems, Eric's gonna have to deal with it and maybe subject to more fines. This is the golf center site on Scotland Road.
It's been plenty wet. It has been plenty wet.
It's been very wet, it's been very wet. And the other thing that we noticed was, a lot of the pines that had been planted were planted. Yeah, they were, the root balls just came right up, so...
It's one of the headwinds as well, it's a combination.
The ground was saturated, it went a little out, they never got seeded properly, there was no root development, so they just went over.
Oink.
So it's gonna have to address that. And we never got the bottom, but we have got...
I think that happened. I don't think so.
Too long, painful, let her... Long, painful, once again.
But we never got the bottom. Although I think that was gonna come after the landscaping plan, so...
Okay. So, CDA, have you been to the CDA?
No report.
No report. Merrimack Valley, we missed the last meeting, but is there anything that they've been doing at a staff level that you've been working with them on?
Well, continuing to work, we're, the updated maps is a little late this year, Michelle and I went through them pretty thoroughly and had a meeting with Gerard and Michaela, their new GIS person, to address those. We're finding, what we're trying to do, we're finding parcels that are problematic in terms of their boundaries, and so as we identify those, we're addressing them when we can. Emily's been doing research on one, which really, there was a, there was a court judgment that shows one outline, a perimeter plan that was submitted that shows a different outline for the parcel, so we're trying to sort out some of those things. But they should be ready and printed soon. The other thing is this rural policy group that's having a listening session here next week.
I don't know what that is.
On the 14th, and I really still don't understand what it is either, but that will be here, if anybody is interested in going, they are requesting our SCP, and we'll see who shows up. So that's it, liaison reports, I guess.
I've just changed my, do you have the letter?
I do.
I decided to open it. So this is my letter to Tracy. Tracy Blay is town administrator, dear Tracy, this is a note to let you know that my last day of serving as planning board member will be November 13th, 2018. I have so much enjoyed my time on the board, made all that much more meaningful by the support that you have given to me and my fellow board members. Over the past seven years, I have also been fortunate to have had the support of the selectmen of the boards and your staff. And of course, our work on the board is made infinitely better by the quietly unassuming and highly professional work of Martha Taylor, without whom we would all be lost.
Right.
So, so I think our, our next bit of business is to elect some new planning officers, so I think that's what we need to do. And I think we need to start with the chair, so, since I'm not gonna be here.
I would move that we nominate Rachel to be our chairperson of the board.
I'd support that, as I can, I still vote, don't I?
Sure.
I think so. Sure. Not going yet.
You second it?
Second it.
Any comment about it? Any thoughts?
Sounds good.
I'd say we railroaded right through.
Yes.
I think you'd make a great chair, and look forward to hearing reports about how it goes.
You'll be the first to know.
Yeah. So, all those in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Good luck. Now we need a vice chair, I haven't even thought about it. Do we, you wanna stay on the vice chair?
I think we gotta have somebody else.
Okay, let's have a new vice chair. Anybody think about it?
Shouldn't you, Anderson? You've done such a fine job, I'd have to say.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I'd like to nominate Jim Robinson as the vice chair.
Second.
Any comments?
No, sort of all.
All those in favor? All right.
You have to explain to me what that is.
You're, you're in. I mean, it's, it's not unimportant, every time, if you noticed, every time I needed it, I'd look at George, "George, what do we do now?" I mean, that's, that's, that's what the vice chair's all about.
You get to be here when I'm in Florida, that's it.
Yeah, that's right. So, we need to do the things like clerks and things like that, or should we wait?
Well, tradition has been usually that the new guy is the clerk.
Yeah, so, let's wait. So let's wait on the clerk. Do we have any other positions?
We, we'll also need an alternate commissioner, and John was a commissioner for years, and I've taken over that, that position, but we should have an alternate in case I can't attend a meeting. So the board could act on, that's not critical.
No, but is there anyone who's, might be interested in an alternate position on the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission? Yes, no? Peter, yes?
Sure.
So, I'd like to put that forward, that Peter Pecos be the alternate for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific.
And then, just from a business point of view, John has signatory authority right now for payroll and invoices, he's also authorized to sign A and R plans. George was the alternate signatory, not for A and Rs, but for invoices and payroll. So that would probably need to, to get done. Is the change in chair effective tonight or upon your resignation?
Tonight.
Okay, so Rachel, let me decide, I'm the next on chief.
So do we need to vote on that, or we just say it's, is that administrative?
No, you need to, you need to vote, I need to give something to, I need also to...
All right, so, so I, I would forward that Rachel McManus be designated as the signatory authority for all things related to the planning board, and that Jim Robinson be the alternate signatory for those things.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot about this thing.
I did have to say that.
Did you guys know about this? The planning board stipend? Well, when I met with, when I met with Tracy about, I guess it was June or July, when I had put the house on the market and said it's gonna move, I said, "You know, it would be helpful if we had a, just a small stipend for the planning board." And I said, "I know that the assessors have one, and we, we've never had one." I said, "But it would be inappropriate for me to get it, so could you do it as I'm walking out the door?" And so we have a stipend, that the chair is gonna get $1,500, and the members get $1,000.
Including the associate member.
Including the associate member.
Well, that's the only reason we're here.
I thought it was. So isn't that cool?
It was nice.
So what I was surprised is that Tracy and I never had another discussion about it until I show up at town meeting, and I'm next to Martha, and she says, "What do you think of this?" And it's right on the, on the, on the, on the budget, and I go, "Where the hell did that thing come from?" Oh, excuse me.
So when did you do this three years ago?
No, because I, I didn't, I didn't...
No one asked.
I thought it was bad for a sitting person to ask for something like that.
So it's John's parting gift.
So it's my parting gift to the board. So there you go.
So, just a little business along those lines, I talked to Tracy about how that could be done, I think a lot of, I think this was done in West Newbury, it was done annually in December for any boards getting stipends, board members.
I mean, how they were paid.
How they were paid.
I don't recall how West Newbury did it, I know the board does quarterly.
Okay. The assessors actually do it monthly, you could do it annually, you get a nice little Christmas bonus or some other...
Christmas bonus, isn't that a great idea? Don't you think?
Sure, whatever.
Don't, don't spend it all.
The several's gonna keep it safe.
It's great, it's a great idea, Christmas bonus.
So what you'll need to do is go in and provide information to Diane, our treasurer, to get, get that going.
There must be a form.
I'm sure there's a form.
I'm sure.
We can do it, it is.
We can distribute the form.
Okay. Well, thank you, John. You're welcome. I was very happy to see that, and very thankful to Tracy, that it was just me. So, are there any other issues that board members would like to bring forward at this point in time? What about future board members? Nope. Did you have a good time tonight?
Very much, yeah. Nice to see how you operate and get a lot of questions about some upcoming things.
This is pretty loose tonight, compared, we've, we've had some difficult meetings in the last month and a half or so, two months, where we haven't been quite as jovial. Past year, brought to court by some people, this and that, but it's turned out pretty well.
Well, if it'd be appropriate, I'd like to recognize John and thank him for all of his support and activities to the town. And it's tireless to be in leadership, and there are many things that are done behind the scenes that people are unaware of, and oftentimes I appreciate it, so I'd like to acknowledge and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. But it's, it's made easy by working with Martha, and the staff that's here really is terrific. And it's, it's, believe it or not, even fun.
Sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, yeah, but thank you very much, I appreciate it, Peter.
Well, it has been very interesting watching you deal with some of the more contentious meetings we've had, and you've been a great example for, for how to continue a meeting, shall we say.
They study hand over toe.
John has done a great job of dealing with some of the issues we've had to face, with people leaving at the end, both sides of the issue feeling like they were heard, and this recent downfall of Roe is a great example.
Yeah.
But it's not the only example at all.
So you have a real talent for that.
Well, you know, it's interesting, I, I, sometime, you know, when you're in the process of leaving stuff, you do reflect, and one, one of the things that I, I think of is that I really started out as a classic city planner, you know, and I worked for the Boston New Development Authority for a number of years, and in those early days, just did plans, and you know, but then I was assigned to the Dorchester and Roxbury neighborhoods. Great. That was a pretty quick learner, let me tell you.
That's where you got the thick eye?
No, in all honesty, I, I, I'll never forget, here was the city of Boston falling apart, redlining, houses were burning, I mean, there were fires every night in the Mattapan neighborhoods and eastern Dorchester and other areas, and the then head of the planning department had me working on a bike trail in the Napaunce section of Dorchester. And so I went to the meetings, and I would make, present the plan that he wanted me to present, and I just literally got my butt handed to me, because they said, "Wait a minute, the city's falling apart. You know, people are leaving in," this is 1972, "people are leaving in," it's not like what we're experiencing now, people are leaving in droves, and you're doing a bike trail? You know, you need to be working on boarding up the buildings and getting new buyers in here, and doing a demolition program, reinvesting in the community, and this and that. And, and so for a year, I just went to all their meetings and kept my mouth shut and listened, and it was the best learning experience of my life. And so I took that poll, it was just the best thing that ever happened to me, was getting my butt handed to me. And these were not just neighborhood, this was the, the rep from the area, the state senator, John Brian Donnelly, and Paul White, and all these guys who were, you know, kind of powerful guys and had the ear of the mayor, you know? Anyway, so I, I did have a proving ground, and it was very, very helpful. I loved it. I loved this too. I love every, I do. It's great stuff.
John, I did miss you, really.
Well, I will, no, I will miss you guys, I, and guys. And, and I, I figured out that I attended like 140 meetings in the last seven years.
Wow.
You know, and that's not Saturdays when we had all those things, or the sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
So, it was a very rewarding experience, it was terrific. Thanks. So with that, I'll call for adjournment. Thank you, Peter, for doing that. Anything?
We adjourn.
We adjourn.
All those in favor? All right, we're done.